... under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Public hearing agenda for the City of Dubois proposed 2025 budget, 2025 tax levy, water rate, and sewer rate ordinances.
Want to speak about these?
Yes, please.
Hello, everybody. Just give me a second to get settled and... Okay. This public hearing is for the advertised ordinance or council bills to propose the 2025 budget, the 2025 tax levy, the 2025 water rate, which is an increase of $2, and the increase in a sewer rate also of $2. Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding these levies for these bills?
Is that an increase of $2 per thousand, per thousand gallon?
Yes.
Yes. I have all my notes here.
No, I just, I just hope it wasn't per gallon.
It's per thousand.
Yes, $2 per thousand. Oh, yes.
So, so am I thinking right, for the sewage, it's a 13.4% increase? And for the water, it's a 23.5% increase?
I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that question. I would have to sit here and figure that out. I know it's in total, it's $514,000 for the year that the increase equates to. I did not prepare the budget, and I was not prepared to talk about it today, so I'll just be honest about that, and I will get back to you with the answer.
Well, I believe that's what the numbers are.
Yes.
We were led to believe when this merger was all, all starting to come about, that with consolidation would help reduce the fees of government, and reduce the fees of water and everything, what was proposed to be voted on. It seems like we're going the other direction. Seems like you're trying to bring the city rates up to meet the township rates.
They're gonna end up doing that anyways.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I know, that's pretty obvious, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna, and, and with the building of this, of the sewage treatment plant, that's gonna be paid with user fees.
There's also a study being done on that to see what that amount would be for 2026.
Yeah. We have consultants working on it.
So, so everything that we were led to believe prior to consolidation being voted on is not true?
I, I wouldn't say that. I don't, I don't have those numbers, but I will say that if you take the balance between the two, you have to come to that number. Okay, so some might go down, some might go up, am I correct, but I'm saying that?
Okay.
I mean, I wasn't here.
Yeah, we didn't know what those rates are, we'll get back to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
For the record, we have both of your names and addresses.
Yeah, my name is Joel Keen, 6336, on camera, 1000000.
Anthony Sapijio, 701 West Weber.
Thank you.
I mean, it, it just seems like a lot of an increase to me. I mean, at a council meeting a couple weeks ago, Waste Management was in here and asked for 7% on dumpsters, it was turning out, and you're asking for 23.5% on water, and 13.4% on sewage. But it seems, that's my opinion.
Sure.
I did not, I don't know. All right. Yeah, I'm just gonna read these ordinances. Council bill number 1985, the City of Dubois, Pennsylvania, County of Clearfield, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania appropriately specific, specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purpose of the city government here and set forth during the year 2025. Section 1, the expenses of the city for the fiscal year, the following amounts are hereby appropriated from revenues available for the year for department bureaus and specific purposes. The revenues estimated are $8,562,708. The expenditures are broken down into government departments, and total... That's the general fund. The sewer fund is revenues... Operating revenues are $4,807,000, and the operating expenditures are $4,514,000. The water fund, there's capital improvements, capital improvement fund. The capital improvement fund is $42,592,756, with expenditures of $42,587,000. The water fund budget is $4 million, revenues are $4,924,408, and the expenditures are And the capital fund for water is revenues of $1,489,619, with expenditures of $1,478,000. The highway fund is revenues of $708,033, with expenditures of $701,000. Council bill number 1986, ordinance levying and assessing the taxes of the City of Dubois for the year 2025 for the general fund purpose, the bond sinking fund, for the maintenance of the Dubois Public Library and the Dubois Recreation Fund. Be it ordained and enacted by the City of Dubois and council assembled, and it is hereby ordained and enacted by the authority of the same, a tax of 10 mils is hereby levied and assessed against the taxable property in the City of Dubois for the year 2025 to be used for general city fund and the sinking bond fund. The rate of taxation is $1 on each $100 of assessed value of taxable property. A tax of 3 and 1/2 mils is hereby levied and assessed against the total real estate valuation in the City of Dubois for the year 2025 to be used for general city fund purposes for the maintenance of the Dubois Public Library Fund and/or the Recreation Fund. The duplicate upon the said taxes shall be assessed for the year 2025 as prepared and submitted by the Board of Assessment and Revision of Taxes of Clearfield County, and shall be placed in the hands of the City Treasurer for the year 2025 as provided by law. All ordinance or parts of ordinance inconsistent are herewith are appealed.
So, it looks like, I'm sorry to interrupt, it looks like there's a type in section 3.
There is.
Says the tax of 3 and 1/2, and then in parentheses it has 1.75, so...
Section 1 also. Yeah, tax of 28 and 1/2.
Exactly. So, are we, can we clarify which one it is? It's the lower, close to the predetermined ratio, changed by the county?
This is, yes, this is to account for the predetermined ratio, and so it is gonna be the 10 mils, and it's going to be the 1.75 mils.
10 mils.
We're crossing off the 20 and the...
So, the numbers are the one, the numbers matter, the words don't.
We'll get that corrected. Council bill number 1987, amending chapter 340 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dubois to amend the rates for the treatment of sanitary sewage. Now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by the council of the City of Dubois, and council assembled, and is hereby enacted and ordained by authority of the same as follows. Section 1, that the following provision, chapter 340-3 dot A, is hereby amended to read as follows. All persons owning property within the boundary lines of the City of Dubois and connecting to the sewer system shall pay the city a monthly rental for sanitary sewage service based on the qual- quality, quantity of water used as evidenced by meter readings of water meters installed for the purpose of measuring water purchased from and furnished by the Water Works and such other meters may be installed pursuant to any provision of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dubois. The amount of such rentals shall be the sum of $17 per 1,000 gallons of water per month. Section 2... Section 2 is section 340-3D, rates for treatment of sanitary sewage. The foregoing language of section 340 notwithstanding, the rate charged to all industries and manufacturing companies located when, within the corporate boundaries of the City of Dubois shall be billed on a monthly basis at the following rates. 1 to 400,000 gallons is $17 per thou- thousand, 400,000 to 800,000 gallons is $7.19 per thousand gallons, 800 and 1,000 to 1.2 million gallons, $4.73 per thousand gallons, and any usage over 1.2 million gallons per month is $3.22. Section 3, nothing herein shall alter, change, amend, or otherwise affect any other sections of chapter 340 of the Code of Ordinances as previously amended, and all other provisions of chapter 340 as previously amended, not in conflict herein, are hereby reaffirmed and re-ratified as if set forth at length herein. Section 4, all ordinance or parts of ordinances or resolutions in conflict herein with the and the same are herewith repealed. Section 5, it is hereby declared to be the intention of the city council that the parts, sections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, and phrases of this ordinance are severable. And any section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional, illegal, or otherwise invalid by the judgment or decree of a court of competent jurisdiction, that invalidity shall not affect any of the remaining parts, sections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, or phrases of this ordinance. This ordinance shall become effective immediately after passage, and the rates enacted herein shall be imposed on all bills due for months beginning with the first month after passage of this ordinance, and shall continue in effect until altered or changed by ordinance. This will be voted on at the next meeting. Council bill number 1988, amending chapter 440 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dubois to modify the water rates to be charged to customers of the City of Dubois. Now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by the city, by the council of the City of Dubois, and council assembled, and is hereby enacted and ordained by authorities of the same as follows. The chapter 440 is hereby amended, amended by the modification of the following: water rates, monthly usage, for up to 100,000 gallons, $10.50 per thousand; any usage over 100,000 gallons is $5 per thousand. This ordinance shall become effective with the first billing cycle after adoption. All other parts of chapter 440 not in conflict herein are reaffirmed and reratified as if set forth at length herein. All parts of chapter 440 in conflict herein with are hereby repealed. This will also be voted on at the next meeting. And one more. This is council bill number 1989, amending ordinance 261, sections 1 and 2, to amend the tax levy levered in support of the library. Now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by this council of the City of Dubois and council assembled, and it is hereby enacted and ordained by authority of the same as follows. Section 1, the tax of 1 mils on the dollar of all taxable property in the City of Dubois is hereby levied for the year 2025, and to be leveled, levied annually thereafter until the electors of said city decide otherwise, for the establishing and maintaining of a free, public, non-secretyran library within the City of Dubois. Section 2, hereafter, when the tax duplicate is made up, it shall be the duty of the City of Dubois clerk to place said tax of 1 mils on the tax duplicate to be collected by the collector of taxes for the City of Dubois, and a warrant by the power city authority shall be issued to the collector for the said, the collection of said taxes as provided by law. Nothing herein shall alter, change, amend, or otherwise affect any other sections of ordinance number 261, not in conflict herein with, and are hereby reaffirmed and reratified as it's set forth at length herein. All ordinance or parts of ordinances or resolutions in conflict herein with the and the same are herewith repealed. It is hereby declared to be the intention of city council that the parts, sections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, and phrases of this ordinance are severable. If any section, paragraph, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is declared unconstitutional, illegal, or otherwise invalid by the judgment or decree of a court of competent jurisdiction, that invalidity shall not affect any of the remaining parts, sections, paragraphs, sentences, clauses, or phrases of this ordinance. This ordinance shall become effective five days after final passage, and the rates enacted herein shall continue in effect until altered or changed by ordinance. Done. I didn't say that. Does anyone have any questions or any thoughts? I will take them, and I will get back to you with the answer.
Does the PUC have to be notified of water rate increase?
No.
Joe Becker, East Sheraton Avenue. Does your proposed budget include the increases in the rates?
Yes. East Sheraton, have any reason?
Anthony Sapijio, 701 West Weber. What are we being charged for water now as compared to the new rates for a thousand gallon?
$2 less. Let me get back to you. I believe this ends the public hearing.
Motion to adjourn the public meeting. So moved.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Go to the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. We're going to move into the regular meeting. Good evening, I'm calling the December 9th council meeting to order. Please stand, if you are able, to join me in a particular...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We had an executive session, media proceeding this meeting, to hear from the solicitor and the manager on several personnel items and potential litigation. No decisions were made. Public comments on agenda items, please. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. Make a motion to further the city council meeting minutes on November 25th, 2024.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. We're doing this a little bit different, we're doing a registry of invoices, okay? They are available online. We are gonna take a vote on the disbursements.
I'll make a motion to approve the disbursement $636,065.57.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Old business. This will be the second reading of the council bill, 1989 Library Ordinance Amendment. We're not gonna read it again. Yeah.
Freshly, yeah, so that one was separate. We're gonna ask that you postpone that to the next meeting due to the fact that the ordinance explicitly said it would be passed the next meeting despite the fact that I believe it could be passed in this meeting.
Okay.
That said, we do have to do a second reading, and you at least have just read it inadvertently even though it wasn't advertised in the public hearing, so I think that you have the prerogative to suggest that it has already been read in this meeting.
Okay. And if, Ben, if you could present the management report request?
Management report related to the CDPG?
Yes.
Before you, you have resolution 2024-0398. This is for the Community Development Block Grant Modification. The request is to delete the Ori Avenue and Robinson Street Waterline Improvements Project, which has a line item activity in the amount of $253,103,400, and instead add a new activity to fund a waterline improvement project on portions of Orient Avenue, Division Street, North Port, and South Port in the amount of the same. This went through a public hearing process at the, it was last Tuesday. We've heard public comments, this resolution is ready to vote, and then as soon as it is approved, we will contact the Department of Community and Government Development and request this change officially. So I would ask for a motion to approve resolution 2024-0398.
So moved.
Second. Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Westall &amp; Company, change order. Ben, produce, please say.
Yes. Westall &amp; Company is our auditing firm that's doing the audit for 2023, and due to many limitations, some of the field work and turnover of staff within our organization, some of the extensions on field work, they have asked for an additional $19,370 for an extra 290 hours that it took them to do the work. They are willing to split that with us, so, so they're actually asking for $10,000.
It was work outside of the scope of the...
Original audit.
Original, original audit.
Yeah, the engagement letter.
We, we would need a motion on that?
Yep, this, this change order, it says the higher number. Like, you have something with the, with the negotiated number?
Yes.
Okay, just so that's clear.
Yeah, we need a motion.
With that, no. The requested motion would be to approve the change order in the amount of...
$10,000.
I'll make a motion to approve that change order for, in the amount of $10,000.
Second. Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
I'm looking here, the 50 split, is that off of the 38,000 or the 19,000?
The 19, they're gonna split the 19.
They're gonna split the 19, okay. Uh, yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
No.
Galpin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Planning Commission Lot Consolidation, Penn Dock Street. Please say.
I have a memo for Penn Dock Street. The planning and, the Planning Commission heard last week regarding the Dock Street Lot Consolidation, a final lot consolidation plan for the Dubois Area Economic Development Corporation, where the property located at Penn Dock Street had been prepared and submitted, and the plan was reviewed for conformity to the zoning and subdivision and land development ordinance system, and as a result, the engineer, Mike Hayes, recommended approval of the final lot consolidation plan. They, they make a recommendation, the board has to vote for approval.
Is the County Commission review necessary? I believe they would have had to. Yeah. I mean, they, their advisory only, but I don't know if it was submitted to them.
Yes.
The Planning Department would have. I assumed it was, I was just...
You're on.
Yeah, okay. And it's in order for motion.
Yeah, can we have a motion on that? Make a motion, we take the Planning Commission's recommendation for lot consolidation on Penn Dock Street.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
No.
Galpin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Two separate motions?
Yeah, three separate.
Two separate motions. Conditional use, 800 West Weber Avenue.
So both of these, next two agenda items, they are conditional use requests, variances from 800 West Weber, 333 West Long. In both cases, these have to be advertised for public hearing, and the request that we are making is that the board pre-authorize the manager to advertise for, schedule and advertise such public hearings.
Two separate motions, please.
Sure.
I will make the motion to pre-authorize advertisement for conditional use 800 West Weber Avenue.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Conditional use, 333 West Long Avenue.
Motion to approve the advertisement for conditional use at 333 West Long.
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galpin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes. Thank you to the department heads for their reports. Would any of you like to comment to the public on your reports?
I could do the fire department if you want.
Yes, please.
Leo Brooks, Assistant Fire Chief, I'll, I'll do some commenting on our, our fire department stuff in the past month. We had a couple fires in town, 819 West Washington last Tuesday. What's unique about that is the township also got dispatched for a structural fire at the same time, so we had all nine companies from both departments, you know, crossing each other, going to each other's halls, and so everything worked out great there. And last Thursday, we had one in 19 and a half, South Stockdale. Another great job by the men and women of the department, that one was a little bit unique as well. There was some stuff in that, in that structure that made it pretty dangerous for our firefighters. A few things that we found, a few things that happened, so luckily we only had two guys with minor injuries, I believe. So that, that worked out great, and I want to thank everybody, and the fire marshal was investigating that one. Toys for, toys for tots, we had boxes overflowing, so it was the best, I think, we've ever done as far as the department, so I want to thank everybody. Just outstanding job, it's something that means a lot to the department, that organization, so I want to thank everybody. We're doing the drill at Penn Islands Thursday, December 19th at 6:00 PM. We gotta meet with them later this week to finalize what the scenario is gonna be. So you can see fire trucks and a bunch, a bunch of us out there, that's what's going on. Pretty large drill, so we try to do that with them on a regular basis, so. We have new chiefs coming in next year. John Chelsea is gonna be our Fire Chief of the City of Dubois, hopping back in the driver's seat, he was Fire Chief for the City 2011, 2012. I'll be moving up to Deputy Fire Chief, and we have a new Assistant Chief coming aboard, Rick Johnson. He's a member of Vol. 30's company, so we'll be taking the reins next year. And with that, we'd like to thank Mike Federici, the current Fire Chief, who's served six years, his past two years as Fire Chief for the city. He did a fantastic job, and we thank him for all of what he's done. And lastly, we had some snow last week. If you have hydrants around your house, just kind of keep... If you have hydrants around your house, just kind of keep and shovel it out for us, that saves precious seconds, so we really appreciate that. Everybody pretty much does a good job in this town, past winters, so that's it.
Chief Brooks?
Yes.
If somebody still has Toys for Toys for Pots, can they drop them off somewhere?
I believe the radio station, Bigfoot, is it called Bigfoot?
Yeah, Bigfoot.
Is that one of the B-line?
Yeah, it's right over there by Walmart almost.
Got it, okay.
Just in our reports, going back to the fire on Stockdale, I just wanted to give one of our officers credit, Officer Red was on patrol that day, saw the smoke coming from the house, actually called it in and assisted with getting a female out of the window from the house, so I just wanted to call him out for that.
Thank you. Thank you. Lisa?
I just want to give you all an update on some of the things that we have been working on since we arrived here. We have been spending time getting to know the board and their, so that we can support them in their common goals. We have spent a lot of time with the staff, understanding their positions and working on load balance, and one of our goals is to erase the municipal lines as we move towards consolidation within the staff. Ben is working on a consolidated elections memo, so that everyone understands the election process for the new city. We've met with the fire department and talked to them about their perspective and the work that they're doing, and we really appreciated their open dialogue and collaboration. We are working on getting the many complex grants and projects that you, your city and the township are involved in into a project management system. There is a lot, I really commend this team, the board, the staff, Sean, for the work that they've done to gather the many grants and do all the projects, the police department, the public works. We currently have nine open write-to-knows that we're gathering the data for. In the next two weeks, we intend to post a position related to engineering, and we're working to streamline the agenda process, you can see why today, and for the five board meetings that we have each month. We are working on closing the bond, and we have a kickoff meeting with the Pennsylvania Economy League this week on Wednesday to begin the process for the consolidated budget and contracts. So there's a lot of things happening in this organization.
Thank you. I'd like to commend the street department. Snow coverage was great, and I was really impressed.
They did a great job.
Yeah, they did a great job.
They all come out when you call them.
I'm Ron Hurley Bird, but when I went out, everything was really, really clean. Thank you. Public comments, please stand and clearly state your name and address.
Hi, everybody, and thank you Mayor Reesinger. My name is Ed Gollner, and I am from Waste Management in Broadway, 6330 Route 219. So, how much time do I have tonight?
You just go right ahead.
Okay, I think it won't take more than eight o'clock to get all this right. Okay, here we go.
I might have to call, you know, your mission in the middle, Ed.
Completely understand.
You mind, Ed?
We're all going to split a pizza, between all of us, yes. Hey, thanks, everybody. I just wanted to take a few minutes to introduce myself. I know many of you here, and nice to see everybody out tonight on this bad evening, kind of yucky weather out there, so what I wanted to do, talk to you about waste management, talk to you about a couple of the programs that we have going on in the city of DuBois, and one of the things I wanted to talk to you about is our recycling program. So Waste Management, we're the industry leader in recycling, the best, and now you have the best in the city of DuBois. One of the things that I really love about Waste Management, we have an excellent sustainability program, and our sustainability program is your sustainability program, and you can claim it because you're a customer of Waste Management. That's really important to a lot of companies and a lot of individuals, right? They want that, we want that, okay? So this sustainability program of WM Waste Management is your program too. And what I have for you tonight is some information about our new Pittsburgh recycling facility. I had the opportunity to take Sean Orbaugh and Zapp Lawhead down to our new recycling facility down in Pittsburgh, and have them tour the whole facility. It's open to anybody here, any of the council members or city employees that like to go, or the mayor, of course. Love to take you, take you down, show you the facility, show you how it works. We just did a major upgrade to it, spent $23 million just to process recycling, and it's really fascinating, you know, for me, I've been in garbage bins a long, long time, and to watch how we sort recycling, now we're actually sorting things by with optical tools to look at shapes. So now, instead of trying to figure out what the material is, it can tell just by the shape of a bottle, the shape of a container, what kind of plastic it is, get it in the right area. It's really sophisticated, and there's quite a few employees that are operating the equipment too. I'd love to show it to you, show you how it works, but it is an excellent program, and really a feather in the cap of the city and the township, you know, for having it there. I have information on it that I'm going to, at the end of the meeting, if I catch people coming out the door, I'll give you the information, if you want to take it home and read it.
Hey, Ed, if you want to give that to us, we can probably put that on the city website.
Yeah, great, yeah, I'll give it to you for the city website, talk about that a little bit, and then the other thing I wanted to share with you too, just a little information on how to do business with Waste Management, right? Kind of ask them, why do you want to show us that, because sometimes it's not easy, all right? We have all kinds of legacy phone numbers out there over the years that work, but some work better than others. So what I did was, I went to work with the help of Zach Lawhead, actually, from the city, said, man, I need a better way to figure this out, so I think I have it all figured out for all of you, just to share with you.
I'll have to download the website also.
Give that to you, and I'll give you a copy of it, and one of the cool things is, we have a QR code you can scan, those of you that want to use your smart phones, you can scan the QR code, you can download our app. Many of our customers actually monitor where their garbage is, right? So what we're trying to do is evolve the Waste Management Program, just like UPS and FedEx. So most of you have probably got a package from UPS or FedEx where you can monitor where your shipment is and when it's going to be delivered. This helps you do those kind of things. You know, a generation behind me, maybe another generation behind me, that's the only way they want to do business today, right? Many of our kids, grandkids, whatever we have, they want to do business that way, and I get it, and I see what it is, and that's the direction Waste Management's going. That's the direction they want our customers to go. Some of us are going to go kicking and screaming, like me included, but this is good, and it's a great program. We can still do business on the phone, we can still do business by email, we can still do business, now we can do business electronically. But it's a great program, it's really the best in the industry. I wanted to share it with you, so you can see what it's all about. So I'll give you all a copy of this, and I'll give you a copy for the website. I'm available to ask any questions if anybody has it tonight. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you for your time. Yes, sir.
Yes, Zapp, please, 701 West Weber. First, I have two things. Just wanted to get the councils on the proposed water bill. The people that have rentals, they are, the people that own the rentals are still being billed for the water, correct? Water and sewage, and they have to pass that on to their customer, to their rentees, whatever they are.
The tenant.
Okay, the tenant, yes. The, I just wanted to make sure of that, because I've heard different things about somebody was trying to change that without actually going through this process of coming to the council meeting and just going in and telling the people up at the city office that that's not how it is, we're going to do it this way now, because I'm one of the ones who part. I just wanted to make sure of that. And also, I'm going through downtown and I'm seeing all these big containers in the downtown. What the hell are they? Are they for planting flowers, for trees?
I'll address that at the end of the meeting.
And I would just, and, well, I'll wait for you to address it, and then if I have another question, I can ask you, correct? Nope, well, then I'll ask you now. How much do those things cost?
I'll address that at the end.
The final, and I would like the final bill with them, not just the containers themselves, but filling them with topsoil or whatever you're putting into them. How much did it cost for the, for the men to actually buy the topsoil and put them in up there and everything else?
Labor.
You have the labor, whatever, whatever it costs to do that. To me, they're an abomination. I don't like them.
They're an eyesore.
Yeah. You're going to address it, then if I have any other questions, I'll be at the next council meeting.
Perfect. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Dave Ruprecht, General and Road. With respect to the acting management team, with the election coming up and there's discussion on how that's going to work, I guess even as important or more important than that is, when would the timeframe be and some of the criteria for someone who wants to be on the ballot, if, if it's the next meeting, if it's early January and we find out late December, that's a short window of opportunity if there's people who want, you know, so is there a timeline? That's what I'd like to know.
Do you normally allow the manager to address?
You can go ahead and do that.
Okay. So the process will look something like, since it's a city, it will be 100 signatures that you'll need on petitions, and those petitions will normally be generated in early February. The pay for the positions, the number of positions, et cetera, will be released in that memo at the consolidation meeting, which I believe is the 18th. So I'll have some pretty definitive answers, but in short, it looks something like this. There will be six or seven positions, depending on the consolidation agreement and where the council goes, the joint board, I guess. And so six or seven, meaning the mayor may or may not be one of the council members. So when that's determined, we'll know whether we will tell the elections office six or seven. And then the Optional Plan Ordinance Act, excuse me, explicitly says that the positions will be filled through the normal election process, and that the positions, the majority of them will end up being four-year terms, and the minority will be three, or, excuse me, two. So it'll look something like this, assuming, which I am guessing, that the joint board amends the consolidation agreement, there will be seven positions put out there. And then up to, you know, a large number of people could fill out petitions in order to go after the position, and then of those, the top seven vote-getters will become council members, the top four would be for four-year terms, and then the next three would be for two-year terms, so that they're staggered.
Okay, I guess, well, the key was more the timeline, so people who would be interested would have time to get the signatures, get them submitted to the county or whoever they go to, Board of Elections, and then also, something you said, one moment. I'm sorry, I drove blind because I was thinking about that, but, yeah, make sure the people have that opportunity that are interested.
Yeah, so the December meeting would be when they'll make that determination on the number, and then...
Oh, I'm sorry, there was, at election time, would you vote for one or two, or, I mean, and you see some, you know, gradual, different elections, pick two of the four or three of the, whatever, do we have that kind of alignment, or is it structured?
All of that will be during the general, yeah. So that'll all be determined based on who wins the primary, right? And so, yeah, all that will be in the memo, the timeline, basically they'll decide in December, positions, January, the elections office will field a form to us that we have to complete and send back to the Board of Elections, and then they'll build the petitions. Those will be released in early February. In that memo, I'll have like the exact dates and such, I don't know exactly when it is. In fact, I'm not even sure the Department of State has released the dates yet. I used to sit on a Board of Elections, so I used to know that, but I don't anymore. So I'll find out when they're going to release those dates, and then you'll have approximately a month to get those petitions turned in, and then the election will be whenever, something like six weeks after that.
Be very clear.
Yeah, go ahead.
Melissa Keane, who we have run. In regards to the election, and I'm not exactly sure how to state this question, but before the joint board meeting, where they're going to decide upon that question about how the mayor is elected or appointed, is there a difference in city responsibilities, duties, or authority of that either way, if it is elected or selected, the mayor?
No, they, essentially, it's still the president of council.
So same duties, same responsibilities, same authority, no matter which it is?
That's my understanding.
There are more duties.
Well, I mean, related to setting the agenda, and there may or may not be like the ability to perform marriages and stuff like that. So, I mean, I would say that it's more duties, surely, but more duties, but no more authority. Chief among equals.
When you say more duties, more duties as...
Such as setting the agenda.
But I mean, as elected or selected?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, there's no difference, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
No, I realize the mayor has a little bit more duties.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I guess my other two processes are different.
Right, they should be the same.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is John Reedy, I live on 334 Olive Avenue. 337 is abandoned right now, it went for taxes, and he was having a garage sale for almost three months over there, and it's all the debris is left there. When it's covered with snow, kids take a shortcut across there, they're going to get hurt on stuff. So if you get somebody that owns it, when you get over there, clean it up.
Scott, can you, you have that number, that address? What was the address, sir?
337.
337, is that the...
Is that the brown one on top of the hill?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's a safety issue, we'll take care of it.
I'm afraid the squad is getting into a crazy access.
Thank you. I'm going to address that at the end too, Blake. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment then, and we'll move on to council member comments.
Sure, I just want to thank our fire department and police department for their quick response to some of the incidences we've had recently. My heart goes out to anyone that finds themselves in the need of such services, and just for everyone to kind of be aware of whatever heating they have, whether furnaces or boilers, just making sure that they're in good condition so that we maybe have less incidents.
Ellen?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Jim?
What Shane was saying, and, you know, also the public works for their good job at it, and everything, and, you know, it's nice to hear that these active fires, that the township and the city work together. Heard a comment about, you know, a sandy engine supply and the ladder truck, which, you know, I don't think's happened ever that I remember, so, I mean, everyone's working together very, very well, and glad to see that progression moving forward.
That's all I have. Councilwoman Jackson?
Just reiterating, the fire department, the public works, I'll address the pots personally downtown. I'm not real happy with them. I know I was aware of the size. It is something I hope that we are going to address. And welcome to Lisa and Ben, they've really hit the ground running, and I think they're going to be a great asset the next year that we have them, two years, so welcome aboard.
Ben? Anything? There are a few things I'm going to address. We are changing, come the beginning of the year, we're going to streamline the meetings, make them a little bit different, we're going to do, use a different, different format, we'll talk about that at the end of the year, okay? And I'm going to address the trees on Maple Avenue and on Main Street. Those were done on several different ways they were done. on several different ways they were done. Don Tar gave us a grant for $5,000. Giant, which is the parent company of Martin Store over here, gave us $4,000. We had a $12,927.30 in-kind gift from the city that was for digging the holes, okay? We also had $13,400 in worth in volunteer funds, that was, we had 80 people that did five hours, it's 400 hours of community, we had people from seven years old to seventy, which was quite a nice event, okay? So that's how that was funded. The pots, that was out of the, it was a line item in the budget that was put in there last year, so it came under that. The pots were about $14,000, the flower bulbs that were planted in them were about $600, I do not have anything from the city, and I didn't request anything from the city, so I do not know that, okay? The pots, they do look big on the street. We're gonna start a beautification committee, I already have two members, Kathleen Clement and Mary Ann Fida. Anybody else that would like to be on that committee, please just let us know, you can go on the website and email me, and we'll see who wants to be on that. You seem to have a concern about the, would you like to be on the committee?
Beautification? I got my irons in too many fires.
Okay, all right. Just served on a, and the old bill advises, and the plants right now, the pots right now, their dirt is frozen, we cannot move them, we'll look at, we'll look at getting it added in the spring with the committee, okay? We did have, it was a good week in the city, we had three grants that were approved that I signed, one is the home grants, $500,000, which was given to us, we did, that's the one that the Clearfield County Redevelopment Authority, Lisa, did for us. We were in a meeting, and I said, what can we do about Blake? She says, well, have you ever tried the home, the home grant? I said, no, she applied for it, we got it. That's $500,000 for the city and the township to share, and they're doing the whole thing, manage it and everything, doing all of that for us. We also got a stamp grant for $50,000 to hire the consultants for the city managers, which actually, when we do the math, is actually cheaper than the way it was done before. Before, it was, you know, it was two city managers, one engineer and a city manager, this is actually less expensive, okay? And we also got, the CDBG grant was approved, that is going to go to Coke Hill for the water, for a water line. Then after that, we'll pave that, and we'll be all done over there, and we'll move on to another part of the city. Okay? That's all I have. Okay, thank you. Entertained, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Property move second, any questions on the motion? Vote on the motion.
Dietz.
Yes.
Augenbach.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Galfin.
Yes.
Reesinger.
Yes.